With us? Bob Leary?
I see his number on the screen.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Leary, can you dial star six?
I'm on you now, we're good.
Alrighty. So that's a roll call that leads us into the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'll have Allison Branchfield lead us from Rogers ROTC in the Pledge of Allegiance and the presentation from the ROTC. Do I see Allison? Oh, there she is, okay.
I'm here.
Great, thank you for being here and it's all yours Allison, thank you.
Would you like to play the video first or the pledge?
I think they'll do the video generally first.
Okay.
Good morning Vikings, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you very much Allison for being here and representing the ROTC tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. I will now have moment of silence, I'll get over to my next order is moment of silence. We would ask that you please take a minute and keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. We have Robert Bob Schoonover, former Rogers High School cross-country indoor and outdoor track and field coach. Mary Petrick, grandmother of Michael Karasek, Rogers High School teacher. Mary Elizabeth Gardella, mother-in-law of Jamie Meeks, registration clerk. Marie Margarita Rodriguez, grandmother of Anna Gomez, MLL liaison. Maya Potter Carlstrom, stepdaughter of Susan Potter, par educator at Pell Elementary School. Jean Callahan Coyne, mother of Eileen Rerick, clerk at Thompson. Robert Coyne, NACTEC custodian and mother-in-law of Nancy Coyne, par educator at Thompson. And Janice Leary, mother of George Leary, TMS plan engineer. We'll now have a moment of silence. Thank you. That leads us to the next order of business, which is our student council update. And I believe we have Maggie Cohen with us, I'm just looking around to see. I don't know that I see if she there? Maggie with us? Kathy, do we have Maggie with us, or do you have to let her in?
I'm looking to see if she is in the waiting room.
She was there just a minute ago.
Yes, I thought I saw her too.
Get moved over to the attendees or something? Here she comes, coming back.
Here she is.
That's good, I get to give her a little ribbing as a youngster having technical difficulty. I think she's coming back, I see, oh, she disappeared again. Oh, there she is, Maggie's with us. We'll have Maggie give us the student council update. Maggie looks frozen.
Mr. Gomes, I believe she's frozen.
I think she's frozen.
Maggie, if you can hear us, do you want to jump out and try coming, I think she's trying to come back in again. So, let's give Maggie a minute to just looking for her to pop back up, she'll also be with us for the next see her popping up again. How you doing Maggie?
Can everyone hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem, we were just chit-chatting, it's good to have a youngster having technical problems, I don't feel so bad. Go right ahead Maggie and with your presentation for the student council.
Awesome, so I'm Maggie, I'm the president of the student council. And I'm sure to give my little update. We started back in school in person today, so that's very exciting. Winter sports also to start this week, which is also very exciting. There's an eighth grade parent information session tomorrow at 6:00 PM. The link is sent through the Rogers announcements every day. The Newport Community School offers tutoring Monday through Thursday with different subjects being taught every day, so Monday is English and so on and so forth. Free meals are being offered to all children under eighteen, whether they attend Newport Public Schools or not. And information can be found in the Rogers announcement or on the website. Junior class is selling hats and masks. And they're selling masks in small and large. And you can contact Frankie Underwood, Mia Prendergast, Ellie Cohen, or Sophie Redding-Box to order. And Newport Public Schools will have the opportunity to provide asymptomatic testing at school starting February, and more information will be sent when that is available. We heard about that in the announcements. Class of 2024 just started selling their class shirts just this week. And class twenty-one rings and necklaces are starting to be and twenty-two year books are just becoming available today. And that's my update.
Alrighty. Any questions or comments for Maggie from members of the school committee? Stephanie, go right ahead Ms. Winslow and then.
And this might be for Maggie or even Colleen, two twenty-two year books, so the yearbook that was delayed last year, it's now it's good? It's coming out? Is that what I heard correctly?
A, yeah, so they sent out an email to the classes just today. And you can come to Jen Carter for more information on that.
That's good.
Great news, thank you.
Colleen, did you have a, yeah, okay, go ahead.
I did, Maggie, thank you very much. And that's good news, I didn't know about the 2020, we've been waiting for that. I just wanted to let you know and the public, we just found out today. We received an earlier date for asymptomatic testing. And that will be next Wednesday at Pell, there'll be more information coming out tomorrow. But I wanted you to also know for Rogers, the binax testing, our attorney has reviewed the MOU. So we'll have tests for the athletes starting at the end of this week, next week, so we'll be able to do the the quick one, fifteen-minute one, we'll teach you all how to do that if you're interested. But athletes will be using that, so thank you, but good luck.
Any other questions or comments for Maggie? Alrighty, I don't see any, so we'll, thank you Maggie and we'll see you in a few minutes and next month again, so thanks.
Thank you.
So, that leads us, the next order of business is the recognition certificates. Tonight we will be recognizing the girls tennis team, which were the Division III champions. So we're going to give Kathy a moment to get them all out of the waiting room and into the meeting, so bear with us and when Mrs. Nash tells us we're ready, we'll begin with that segment. So as you guys are joining in, we're just waiting for the tennis team for all your teammates and everybody to join the meeting from the waiting room, so as soon as we get everybody into the meeting, we'll begin our little recognition ceremony.
Mr. Gomes, I believe we have everyone
Awesome.
at this time.
So, this is the recognition, tonight we have with us the Rogers High School girls tennis team. They won all six of their regular season matches. They defeated Situate High School four to zero in a semifinal match before defeating Classical High School four to two in the Division III championship match at Slater Park. This marks the first girls tennis title for Rogers since nineteen ninety-four, great accomplishment. The senior class is well represented by nineteen of the twenty-three team members. Of the nineteen seniors, sixteen were on the squad that went undefeated last season. Up until the Division III championship match with a loss to North Providence. So what I'm going to do now is I'll read through to recognize the girls that are with us from the tennis team, the twenty-twenty tennis team, Division III champions. I'll recommend girls so you get a little recognition that as I call your name, I'll pause if you want to say RHS or tennis or any other thing, if you're on mute, you'll come up on the screen for the presentation, so gives you a little recognition. So that's up to you, but I'll go through them and as I say, I'll pause to let you just give a little cheer so you're you're recognized, so we'll start and it goes in alphabetical order, so you can also be ready for your name that way too, so here we go, we'll start, first name is Grace Burgess. And Elena Cohen and Maggie Cohen, I don't know if they're together, but and then we have Julia Damari. Peyton Fitzgerald. And Abigail, I'm sorry Peyton Gardner. Abigail Kane. Catherine Kerwin. Alita Kui. Sorry, Alita Kui. Emma Martins. Lauren, I'm sorry Laura Mottlin. Mercine McKeon. Kayla Moja. Emily Murphy. Alexandra Newsome. Liza and Tess Noons, I'm not sure if they're there they are. Breen Palmer. Emma Patterson. Jaden Petrie. Lillian Riley. Krisma Sack and Rascal. Hopefully I did okay on that. And Kaylee Sheekey. And the coaches were Wayne Turner, head coach, and Marie Noon's assistant. I'm not sure
Means here.
If they're here, but other coaches, would they like to say anything, if not, I know Mr. Colley is here. Girl, did you see the coach there? Come on, we know Wayne likes to talk and now he has the floor and he won't? I don't see. I don't. Is he, is he maybe in the waiting room, let me see if he's on the
He is, he is on.
Okay.
Hi, can you see me?
Mr. Turner, thank you.
Hi, on behalf of the girls who are normally never that quiet. I know they very much appreciate your recognition. And on behalf of them, I'd like to thank you. It's been a great four years. And you know, this is a great culmination to a number of recognitions. And again, I I appreciate it on behalf of everyone. And of course, I'd like to thank Mr. Colley in the school for their forever support. Thank you.
Thank you. Big round of applause, yeah, everybody want to clap, that's a great accomplishment girls, you should be very proud and but you should be very proud of yourselves in representing the school. Is there anybody from the school committee that would like to give comments? I'm not seeing or hearing.
I'll just say congratulations to all, great job, really.
I can't remember where I saw, I saw a picture of the championship banner. I don't know, somebody may have posted it on Instagram, but it was awesome. Just like since the sixty-seventies all the way through and finally like you know, a new stamp on there, congratulations.
I wanted to say, watching that police escort through town was really exciting. I just can't even imagine what it must have felt like to win. And win big.
Alrighty. Well, thank you and congratulations once again, girls and good luck with the rest of your year, so thank you for being here and good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're all welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll give them all a minute to exit and get ready for our next order of business, following on the agenda would be an update on the individual learning plans. And I'm not quite sure, Superintendent Jermaine, is there an order for the folks that are with us tonight or?
Mr. Monahan and Dr. Bian will be presenting this evening. And I believe Mr. Monahan may be taking the lead. Yep, there we go, Mr. Monahan.
So if he wants to go right ahead and start and we'll start there, thank you for being here.
My pleasure. Kathy, I'm trying to share and it's saying host disabled participant screen sharing. I don't know if that's something that can be fixed quickly. If not, I can, I can make it work.
You should be able to share now, Mr. Monahan?
There it comes, okay.
Very good.
Give me a moment and I'll, I'll share that. Has that come up yet? Okay, great. Alright, so, so we're going to collaborate Thompson and Rogers to just give you all an update on, on the individual learning plans. I just many of you are familiar with it, but just to make sure everybody knows what an individual learning plan is, this is, this is a RIDE mandate. It's, it's been in place for a long time. I think the biggest issue in the many years past, I think in the mid, early, early to mid two thousands, it was initiated and schools didn't really have the resources, it was really something that meant, it was meant to be digital, it was meant to be something that could move with the students and having you know, hard copy documents never seemed to work, school districts had a lot of trouble with it and it kind of went the wayside for a while, but I think one thing you can thank the current pandemic for is that we are very digitally connected now and this is something that we can really get going, so we're looking forward to that. What RIDE wants is grades six to twelve to have, you know, two to three activities per year. Where students work on things like career planning, college planning. Planning their course of study and sort of setting goals so that they can you know, take command of their education and really steer themselves in a direction that they want to head. And there's also supposed to be some self-reflection as time goes on to see how they've grown, to see how their interests have changed, how they've matured. And help them for, for planning for after high school. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we, at the high school, we kicked off our first individual learning plan with the use of Zello, which is our digital platform. That we house all the individual learning plan activities in. Students in November did multiple assessments. We gave them the month of November and we used crew time at the high school to, to steer that initiative. They did learning style inventories, career matchmaker, personality type quizzes. And what Zello can do is take all that information and present matches in different types of careers and then it can tell you why those careers match your interests and your personality types and things like that. And then you can read up a little bit more, you can find out what what colleges or what programs are available based on those careers if something interests you. And it, and it builds off, you can, you can retake these different surveys as you better understand what your interests are. And it's a lot of, you know, do you like this or do you not like this and it just it takes all the information, puts it together and gives you some directions to consider. The culminating activity that November, a little over a year ago now was that the students would select three careers of interest and reflect on them and see if they want, if they understood why those careers came up and if there's interest, if there's you know, consideration for further research. Since November, we started a goal-setting task in the spring that was somewhat derailed due to us going remote and all else that was going on. We did participate in a lot of, in the middle school and high school, we, we participated in a lot of training with Zello to get a better understanding how we can use this tool to help our students. Our IT department did a lot of work to get Zello to communicate with Aspen so that students' individual information is now also shared in Zello and they can take that information. Courses that they've taken, how they've done and use that for, for future activities. The big thing that we are doing now. Well, just to give you an idea of what a lesson looks like, we launched this just before break. And we're going to be following up with it this month while we do course selection. This is what, this is what a, an individual learning plan lesson would look like. So their objectives, we want to make sure they can log into Zello, we want to make sure you know, that, that they can learn about goal setting, there's a sample goal-setting activity where they make a SMART goal that you know, that is specific, that's measurable. Attainable. Reasonable. And we did this based on having the students access their report cards online. An underlying task in this is that they make sure they do understand how to log into Aspen, make sure they do understand how to look at their report card and print it out and, and see the information that's going on, how they're doing currently in their academics. And build off of that to create a goal. Everything that we've done with this lesson is also translated into Spanish and Zello itself has a button that you can press. And it turns all the information into Spanish as well, so that our English language learners can, can access this, this as well. We did open the goal up to, we wanted them to make a short-term SMART goal and a long-term SMART goal. We opened it up to, it could be academic, it could be personal, it could be an athletic goal, but really just to get an understanding of, you know, how to make a goal. If students, if people in general set goals and think about how to mark their progress, they're likely to be more successful and reach those goals. This is just a little more information about that lesson. And accompanied by that, like I said, there was a sample short-term goal put together and a sample long-term goal the kids could use to get a better, better understanding of how they might make their own. And just in general, we are, we are currently working on doing our course planning lesson. We've so far gone to the eighth graders and met with all of them and had a virtual assembly where we overviewed the, the process. In lieu of having the eighth graders come into the building like they normally have, we're going to have this eighth grade parent night just to get the parents involved because it's the best we can do right now since we can't really have large groups coming into the building and it's, it's just not safe right now. So hopefully that will get the parents involved because a big part of this is to have them work with their children, support their children while they're figuring out what they want to take for courses next year. It is a big step from eighth to ninth grade. And in, in lower levels, you know, a lot of their program is put together for them, but starting in ninth grade, students can select, you know, career tech programs, there are electives, there are levels of courses, whether they want to take honors courses and things like that. So we want them to make informed decisions. And then on this slide, there are just some other activities that, that Zello enables and that will be creating lessons for. I'm going to turn it over to Thompson to talk a little bit about what they've been doing.
Mr. Monahan, just before you do, sorry, Lee, just, I just wanted to see if there's any questions to this point from anybody on the school committee before we do. Okay.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, didn't see, go ahead.
So have the students been doing this during their, what are we calling that time? Their, their crew period, are they doing this, what about during the, the extra class that they take that's? What are they calling that?
Learning Center.
Learning Center. Are they doing that with those teachers or a crew or where are they doing it?
So far, the goal-setting task was launched independently. With so much of crew being that the teachers are tracking kids down, trying to get them up and trying to get them into school. We didn't want to make this a, a crew-driven task under normal circumstances, it definitely would be. Their learning center time is time that they can, they can do whatever it is they need to do, which this, this would fit in there. The response in December wasn't good, I think for a number of reasons, one of them being that we had to go remote. So what we're doing as a follow-up, I think there's a, there's a, there's something that mentions this later, but um, we're going to do our course selections using this tool. And so every student has, when they go into their, their personal ILP in Zello, it will show every class that they've taken in their final grades along with the current courses that they're taking. And then it allows you to pick next year's classes that will go in as their course selections because we can migrate those course selections into, into Aspen and start the scheduling process. We can oversee that. So if we're working with students live as well as at home remotely, you know, we can work with all of them and we can meet one-on-one in Zoom like, you know, bring them into a room if they're remote or, or meet with them in the classroom. So we're going to go into social studies classes to do that. And then the follow-up activity is going to be to, to do their goal-setting because that's going to be right around the end of the semester that we're doing that later on this month. So that's, because I think to your point, it's hard to coerce the students to do this independently when it's not graded. And it can quickly become out of sight, out of mind, but they do have to do course selections and it is a time when the counselors can work with them to support them and help them get this done and help them understand why it's so important.
Dr. Flowers?
Thank you. Mr. Monahan, just listening to what you were saying and then following the slides here, it would seem, now this, I'm just top of my head here. As you say, trying to get the, the kids to, I want to say buy into it, but to become more enthused about it. Perhaps when you're meeting with the, even virtually with the parents, sometimes I'm just wondering if the son or daughter could be even present at the same time virtually. I'm just, just thinking, some, maybe things will click. Sometimes that joint meeting, doesn't have to be a lot of things lost in the translation, but it looks to me as though there's some research that the young people have to do. If I say I want to go into engineering or whatever, I suppose then you, you'd have to research what skills and also what academics are needed. So this might be something that the, the kids can use. It's just a thought and I'm sure you people have thought about that already.
Yeah, we did for the eighth grade parent night, we did encourage the eighth graders to join their parents. They've heard the presentation more or less once before, but it's a lot of information.
Oh, yeah.
In terms of what you're saying about the research, some really cool things that this tool will do. When you come up with your list of careers, there's a sliding, what do you call it? Like a, there's like a bar at the top where you could say salary. So if you want to increase your salary, you, you slide it up to a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand and then it shows you what careers ballpark. You can also filter it so that you can see what can you get, what can you qualify to take out of high school? You know, and a bunch of them disappear, but some of them remain. And then you add an associate's degree and a bachelor's degree and advanced degree. It's pretty cool.
That sounds great, gee.
And then when you click on a career, it will tell you high school courses that are relevant. It will tell you college majors or, you know, things like that, that you should consider and then it will even drill down and tell you what college is based on which area you're looking at.
Wow.
Have that major. So it's, we're, we're going to use, yeah, we're going to use this and we started to use it last year with the juniors as they were starting their college search and we're going to continue that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I have a question. Don't know if you can see, but does it, does it allow some administrative information as well? So let's just say, you know, we're in the, you know, two, 2021 now, you know, whether there's, I mean, ultimately, if this is in place for a long time, you'd see some trending, but what students are most interested in and things like that. So it can also be more towards what our offerings are. Does it help you with that?
It can. So it compiles, there are some reporting features, it, it compiles the most common or most prevalent personality types. The, what students appear to be most interested in. When they save those careers, it will, it will tell you how many career saves there are, like how many computer science versus arts versus engineering and things like that. So, yeah, it, it does. It doesn't, it doesn't tell the whole story, but it certainly gives you a little more information and helps you to reflect on, you know, what it is we're offering and.
Right. So once it really gets used, I mean, COVID has put a little hole in it is what you're saying, but it should kind of help in that way to understand that the offerings might move a little bit from year to year from interest.
Yeah, I, I think so. And you know, it's, it's gonna be tough to get it to catch on until we start to pinpoint places where we're doing things that this could be incorporated into, in our curriculum. You know, if, for example, our senior project, one of the things the students need to do is, is create a resume. This has a, a resume creating tool. So if we can get the students using this, that's one way to, to get them going. And if they compile their, their achievements and things that, you know, along the way, it'll be a little easier to do that and they'll have a more distinguished resume. You know, it's, so it, it takes time. Right now, as far as the Rhode Island Department of Ed is concerned, they want to see us do something on there, like one activity school-wide or one series of activities so that all students use it at least once. So we're going to do at least that and we're, we're shooting for more. I think that it'll be a little spotty in whole participation, but we're doing, we're doing really well. Some other schools are still debating on which tools they're going to use or they've just chosen one and they're still in their training stages. So the fact that we have this all there and it's a, it's a single sign-on. So if you've signed onto the network as a student or a teacher, you click on the link and you automatically get in. Past tools we've used, we spent half a period just trying to get the kids logged in because they forgot their passwords, things like that. So we've eliminated a lot of that interference.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Go ahead, Ms. Woods, get to you in a minute, Bob, Ms. Woodslow.
Thank you. Is it a tool that the students might end up using really frequently? A few days, every week, you know, checking progress or goals or like working on your resume or, or whatever it might be. I mean, I don't, I don't know, or is it only something that they look at like two or three times a year? I'm just trying to figure out how you keep them interested in it.
You know, I, I don't know about every couple of days, it depends on where you are in, in, in the process. I, I think that juniors who are really starting to think about what they're going to do or even seniors, it, it could be frequently used, it could be very helpful. Earlier on, I, I think the kids, it's, it's hit or miss a little bit. If they see a lot of connected careers to their interests that they don't really feel interested about, we, we start to lose them. We have to find ways, you know, we try to, we try to get them to retake the, the inventory and you can look at, it will tell you if you see a career and you say, I don't like, you know, I don't want to be a, a park ranger. What, what happened there? You can actually go back and see which questions you answered that led the program to match you to that. So you can reflect, do you really like being outside? Because, you know, those are the types of jobs that are outside. Or do you really like math? Because, you know, engineering's a math-related type of thing. So, you know, that's what I mean by the reflection piece and, and we have to get better at it too. But trying to connect what's going on in school with what's going to go on after you leave is, is the key. And what's really tough now is we're trying to be respectful of, you know, the limited amount of time that teachers have students face-to-face. Typically guidance would go into the classroom a little bit more. But you know, we just, we, everything's a compromise right now to make sure that we're not taking too much time. So we, we have to find more creative ways. That's why we started this independently. And well, we will, we will oversee and we will meet with them in small groups and one-on-one, you know, the guidance department will. You know, so we'll get them in, in this, this, this program of studies are this course selection process will be a good introduction where they really use it and they'll actually be able to submit their, you know, their courses that they want to take next year, we'll be able to see and approve of those. So that'll, that'll help them and then they'll have to do a little lesson, some kind of a reflection and that, that goal-setting piece to, you know, give them a good taste of what's going on and that'll stay there. So a year from now or six months from now, they can look back at what their goals were. And as you know, you know, things change overnight sometimes. So it, it's got a lot of potential. We're, we're interested in really incorporating it and finding places where, you know, our teachers, our staff can, can use this to help them and to get the kids on it more.
All right, I think, oh, but Mr. Leary had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What percentage of the students are not participating in this now?
Last, last fall, we had 400 students at least log on and start the activity. So that's about two, that was about two-thirds. Last March, when we started the goal-setting program, we had fewer than a hundred. That was, that was interrupted by the, the distance learning thing and we really didn't press because we had a lot to learn as, as a, as a school and a faculty and a lot to get used to. This activity has been this goal-setting activity that we just began. It's, it's too early to really throw numbers out, but, but we're going to follow up on it to get more participation. I mean, we really have to have a hundred percent of the students choose courses. You know, that's not the 12th grade there, obviously, they're, they're, they're going on to other things, but grades eight through 11. They're all going to touch it. They're all going to choose their courses either, you know, independently with our oversight or we'll track them down and we'll work on it one-on-one with them. So that's going to be close to a hundred percent.
So in the beginning of your presentation, you said that, that, that this was a written thing initially 10 years ago and now it's digital and that, that's why it's better. Why, if we're on distance learning, you know, one day we can walk others rather, why hasn't this been better participation rate?
Well, I, I think the, the biggest, like I said, in the spring, we didn't push it. There was too much, there was just too much. It, it didn't seem like the right time to be pushing an ungraded activity when we weren't sure how to continue to teach and test. We were, we were learning, you know, as fast as we could. This one in December, we launched it and, you know, we went remote again. I, I think the distraction kept kids from doing it independently and ultimately students, it's, it's a challenging sell to tell the kids, this is good for you. It's not graded. You know, it's required, but it's, you know, if you don't do it, we can't, it's hard to hold against you and we don't really want to, we want them to want to do it. So it, it's going to take some salesmanship, I guess, and they need to start to see some benefits. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Flowers?
Yeah, just one more thing. My concern, because you said you're going to be reaching out to parents and care takes us to, you know, meet and go over this with them. My concern are the youngsters who really whose, whose parents are just so tied up with so many other things that it might be difficult to get them involved. that it might be difficult to get them involved. I am assuming, and I have every faith in all of you people, that every effort will be made to get them to, you know, get into contact. But that's always the group of kids that we really have the concern. There were some of them, as soon as the parents first see this, hey, those kids are gonna be at that computer and they're gonna be doing all of these things. But it's the youngsters who really rely on their teachers and counselors and all the people to get them going on this, you know? I mean, it's good that it's not graded, but like you're saying, if you can, you have your fun activities, that's all your field. That's not our place to recommend that. But I just certainly hope that every young person has someone who is going to be connecting with you folks. I know it's not an easy thing.
And so, some of the things that we intend to incorporate is if a student needs a recommendation, whether it be for a job or for college, we intend to use this as a means for us to get information to help us write those recommendations, you know? And that kind of sort of backdoor pushes them to try and use it. You know, when we meet, when the counselors meet one-on-one, they, with the students, they can pull this up and say, I see you haven't really done anything here. You know, you don't know what you want to do. Why don't you try this? And then we can meet again and we'll talk about the results. You know, even with, if we had to have a parent-student meeting, we can bring this up.
Yeah.
Students with IEPs, the special education staff can use this to do their, you know, their post-secondary planning piece.
Right, yeah.
You know, that's part of the IEP. So, we'll get there. It may not go as quickly as we want it to, but I feel like we have a lot of evidence to use it.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Sure. All right. Mr. Monahan, I'm gonna say that we try to jump over to Lee Votay and Meg Colley to let them jump in from Thompson just so we can keep moving along here. Thank you, though.
Everyone, I'm hoping Mr. Monahan can keep his screen up for me. So, as Mr. Monahan said, it has been a couple of years in the making, many years with the ILP. But with Zelo, it is in our district, it's been many years in the making. We, two years ago, we did a pilot where we piloted Zelo with two classes. And then last year, right before the shutdown, we did very similarly to Rogers. We had all students, actually six through eight, fifth graders don't do it, log on and do the matchmaker activity. Like Rogers, we did not really circle back to that until this year. So, in November of this year, we kicked off our advisory. We decided to do it virtually so that everybody kind of got the same thing with our hybrid schedule. We didn't want some people to get it in person and some people to have it online. We also, at Thompson, have a program called Second Step. And we also like to design SEL activities for the kids to align with Dr. Bian's themes for the month and our student council themes. So, we in guidance are creating a calendar every couple of weeks and doing a plethora of activities. Could you change the slide, Mr. Monahan? Thank you. So, this was just of what December looks like. Dr. Bian's theme was kindness and it was in conjunction with a student council kindness competition. So, he did some kindness challenges in advisory so that the kids could participate in that. We're moving a little away from Zelo for the first two Mondays. And then on the third Monday, we returned and we had the kids all log on, which actually went really well since we had them all log on. The year before, the teachers were familiar, the kids were familiar, many of the kids had already done the matchmaker. So, personality style quiz went well, we hear. We have not looked at any of the data. There are a lot of very cool tools that we can go in and see how many kids did how many modules, but we have not looked at that yet. So, for New Year's, we came back and goal-setting is the theme for this month. And for this, we designed an SEL activity for goal-setting that's very kid-friendly. And the fifth graders participated in this as well. Mrs. Colley is gonna share her screen after we present the next slide so you can kind of get a feel for what we've been doing. And then just one more slide, Mr. Monahan? Thank you. So, the rosters are very easily created in Zelo. We have our advisories as our home rooms. The kids are together all year and it just makes a lot of sense to keep them together for sort of open communication. I already pointed out that we did the matchmaker and the learning styles quiz. One of the best things about Zelo is how easily it is turned to Spanish. It's literally the click of a button. This slide is getting back to what we were doing in November, which was gratitude, then focused on kindness. And then, you know, the next step is goal-setting. And we're really excited to have the kids log on to Zelo to choose their classes for next year. I think that the kids will pick it up very quickly, probably quicker than the adults. And I think it's a great tool. And just big thank you to Rogers and Mr. Monahan for coming down and doing two separate assemblies to our two different clusters. Excited for this class to participate. I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Colley just to give you an example of one of our SEL activities that is not on Zelo.
Kathy, could you allow me to share my screen, please?
Yes, you should have permissions to share your screen.
Okay. Let me see if I can figure it out. It doesn't seem to be there. All right, let me see. Can you see it now? Titled "The Best Year Ever." No.
Not yet, Mrs. Colley.
All right. Let me try it again. I'm not sure it's gonna let me do this. Well, I can speak to it.
Mrs. Colley, do you want to send it to Kathy?
Oh, I could do that. I'm gonna share it with her right now.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, Kathy, I just shared it with you. So, she's probably more fluent on this than I am. So, what we did in January, and it kind of dribbled over to this past Monday, is "The Best Year." This has been probably the toughest year for many of us. And we did "Out with the Old and In with the New." And we had students think about two favorite memories from 2023, things I'm grateful for. And this activity will hopefully lead into the goal-setting, one hard lesson I learned, one thing I did this year that I'm proud of. And then we go into "In with the New Year of 2021," places I want to go, ways I can help others, things I want to get better at, things that I'm looking forward to, and new things that I want to try. And we're hoping that this activity will then lead us into the goal-setting activities for the next couple of weeks. And there it is. And we do some customizing of activities just because our students are a little different than the high school in the fact that they need a little more guidance and a little bit more creativity with the lesson. So, we'll be trying to do some creative lessons when it comes to the goal-setting and kind of piggyback on what's in Zelo.
The kids really liked this one. Advisory really is a great opportunity to have a personal relationship with the kids and have open discussions. And this was, we got a lot of good feedback on this one.
Yeah. Hopefully, next time, we'll have some finished copies that we could actually share with members of the school committee. We have quite a few students that are still working on them.
Great. I think we'll take a moment here to see, are there any questions for either Ms. Votay or Ms. Colley?
I have a question.
Right ahead, Ms. Boatright.
When I was looking at the ILP, when they were doing the selection and so on, some of the early sort of middle school years, they were talking about sort of being able to also do career exploration in the middle school years. Is that, I mean, I like what you're doing and I think it's great, but then it's kind of like a way to dabble and to find different things. Is that?
Yes. Well, actually, we did the matchmaker as well, which is the same module that the high school kids did. So, they were doing the same thing, looking at salaries, looking at colleges, majors, and careers. There's a great, you could take your interests and then start to explore majors or look at careers. So, you can kind of go in two different directions. And eventually, they'll be able to kind of tie it all together. From what we understand from Zelo is that you can do that many times. So, you can actually, as a senior, go back and say, oh, my gosh, look at what I wanted to do back then. Or say, see, I've been, you know, I haven't changed very much at all.
Right, right. Good. So, you're doing, so the matchmaker is what's allowing them to do some of that. And then tracking some of that is very cool from even the administrative side to show that kids do evolve. Like, that's such an important thing for young people to realize, you know? So, that's great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see you here, any. So, thank you all for the presentation tonight and all the work you're doing. And it's important and it's great, great that it's rolling out and we're able to get it off the ground and going. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm muted. There you go. That'll keep us moving along. The next item is public comment. And I believe, Mrs. Nash, we have Mr. Kutsukani signed up for public comment.
Yes, we do. I'll admit him right now.
Are there any, is there any other folks signed up for public comment after Mr.?
No, there isn't anything. Okay, Mr. Kutsukani. He has joined us and is muted. Mr. Kutsukani?
Yeah.
I see him on the screen, but he is muted.
Unmuted, right?
There you go.
We can hear you now. Thank you.
No, I was unmuted, but you still couldn't hear me. That's why I kept asking. Let me see something. Let me click that. There we go. All right. I don't like when just my initials there. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak and congrats, school committee members, and welcome to 2021. I want to say that, you know, we've been having many conversations with administration, many positive conversations. The dialogue has been fantastic. I have to say that as we move forward in these difficult times. One of the questions, the question I have for you is, one of the questions that teachers and parents are still asking is about the positive rate of the infection. And I know we're going to do some increased testing in the community. Currently, we're pretty low. We're at 6% when I look today on the state metrics, very low compared to many other communities. So, I'm gonna ask the question that everybody was asking was basically, what is the threshold for you to be concerned? In other words, what percentage would you say, gee, this is too high, we need to return to DL? Or have you not thought about that? So, I just wanted to throw that out there. That's all I wanted to ask.
So, I'm going to say it, we can certainly get you that answer. The only question I have and I'm not avoiding it by any means is, public comment is, we're kind of bound by, this wasn't an announced topic, so we can take your input, we can listen to your public comment and get you the answer, but we can't really discuss it tonight because it wasn't on the agenda. But we can certainly get you some information on that.
All right. Thank you. I mean, in other words, you know, what is the point of testing? You know, if we're not gonna have a threshold at, you know, that's what some parents and many teachers are asking. And we've asked that question of the administration as well. And there's no easy answer to it. So, if you could get back to us, that would be great. And thank you for your time.
We will definitely do that. And thank you for taking the time and being with us and asking the questions tonight. Thank you. That would continue on. If there are no other folks for public comment, Mrs. Nash will continue into the action items. The next act, that would be action item. The first action item is 6.1. 6.1 is a request to approve the appointment of legal counsel. And as you know, we at our, in our retreat, we had a discussion about legal counsel for the year moving forward. It was decided that we would continue with the relationship with Mr. Galvin, Neil Galvin, our longtime attorney. There were two things, there's two parts to this. So, as we get a motion to approve what's before, as I'm gonna suggest that we do it in two parts. When we discussed it at our meeting, we discussed continuing with Mr. Galvin. And we discussed two ways to pay Mr. Galvin at his, at an hourly rate as has been the case, and a discussion about a stipend type of an agreement where it would be unlimited, basic day-to-day limited services to the school department on an unlimited basis for an agreed-upon amount. Mr. Galvin has provided that information. So, the first part of the motion, I would suggest that we have a motion to appoint Mr. Galvin, our legal counsel for the year pending the, working out of the next part of it would be the legal arrangement, which we can then discuss. So, I would look for a motion to appoint Mr. Galvin, the legal counsel. I see Ms. Boatright making the motion, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Is there any discussion or any comments on that?
Right. Just real quick. This is just for the calendar year, correct? This is not for the school year? This is just the calendar year 2021?
Correct. It's a calendar year. We would do the same appointment next year at this time, but it's for the calendar year, year to year, January 1 to December 31st type of thing. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I would ask Mrs. Nash to do a roll call vote on the motion to appoint Mr. Galvin, our legal counsel.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
All righty, terrific. So, as you know, Mr. Galvin did send along and we did provide the information. He did provide us with the hourly rate currently working at. And then he did provide us with the stipend that would be for unlimited services on a monthly basis that he came. monthly basis that he came, you know, he reviewed prior year's billing and kind of came up with a number that he thought would be fair to both parties. The good thing, I think, on trying the stipend would be that it does provide a measure of, I'm hoping that staff would use Mr. Galvin's services on a more basis without being worried about incurring costs for 10-minute, 15-minute, or an email to him during the day-to-day routine stuff. So I would be interested to see if there's a motion for one of the other, one of the, one of the other, either the hourly or the stipend. I might suggest that we perhaps try the stipend on a month, you know, maybe six months, and we revisit it again in June halfway through the year to see if it's working. So again, looking for some thoughts and comments on that, Ms. Boatright.
Yeah, just today in our finance meeting, we talked about this and the fact that with the bond going forward and the school building committee, those billing hours should be separated because that can be put under the bond potentially. So I think that that may make it more difficult to do that at this point in time. I'm not sure. Maybe that can be addressed. I don't know. But that would be one thing that I question how that would work with it. Maybe Mr. Galvin can talk to that potentially.
You're muted, Neil, but go right ahead. There he goes. Should be good.
Yeah, I think we can continue to take notice of the time expended so that time on the bond work could be isolated if you needed to utilize that for some type of incorporation into the bond expenses and/or reimbursement for that. So we would still be able to segregate that out.
Okay, okay, good.
I would also suggest, you know, as the stipend says, it would be for day-to-day work of the school department, inner workings of the school department, business questions for that type of thing. There was also that he would be paid his hourly rate for things such as special ed or DCYS cases or any litigation that he would have to represent. So I may suggest that he just bill is at the hourly rate for the school building committee stuff and we would submit it for reimbursement. That could be another way to handle is to consider it outside the stipend of the day-to-day business of the school department.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dr. Flowers, go right ahead.
I could just read your lips here. So that would be sort of a hybrid then. Would be the stipend, but hourly when it would come to special ed?
Special ed would be included in the stipend. It would be special ed hearings that would not be included. So things like litigation.
Yeah.
Or hearings before the Department of Education, you can't predict the expenditure of time on those things.
True, yeah.
Regular advice relating to special education would be included in the monthly stipend so that.
The everyday.
Andrea should not feel inhibited to call for advice if she felt she needed to seek counsel on something. But if it played out such that a special ed hearing was initiated, that would be extraordinary services and would not be covered by the stipend. But ordinary services under special ed would be covered.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll get to you in a minute, Bobby. Go ahead, Ms. Winslow. You had your hand up, so we'll go to you and then to Mr. Larry.
I, I know that Kathy shared some legal invoice information with us, but it was hard for me to kind of determine. I'm going to assume that the monthly stipend is at or near what we average to spending every year on legal services. And I don't know if the finance subcommittee had an opinion on whether or not they wanted to try it. I know, I mean, I feel like I could go either way, but I haven't really been able to do a careful analysis. So just asking who else might have done that.
Ms. Jenny?
Go right ahead, Mr. Larry.
I have a question I'd ask. I spoke to Kathy today. She was going to get the numbers for this year for attorney, please, for the whole year.
Okay. I don't know. I mean, obviously, we don't, we can get those, but we don't have those to date. I may, I'm sorry, Dr. Jermaine.
I believe Mr. Gonzalez does have it.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. If I may jump in just to answer the question.
Jump right in.
Luckily, I was made aware, so thank you, Mr. Leary, for the heads up. So far, we've spent $20,000 with Galvin and we have.
How much?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand, something like that?
Yes. And we have spent $6,000 with the other law team that we use.
Mr. Gonzalez, is that from July 1 through current now? So for roughly a six-month period?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I would make the motion to continue the same way.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion by Mr. Leary to continue Mr. Galvin's on these provided hourly rate?
Second.
Second. I see Becky, Ms. Bowlen. So the motions were made and seconded. Is there, are there any questions or discussion? I see none or hear none. So, Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to continue Mr. Galvin's compensation on the hourly basis that he has provided?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
All righty. So thank you, everybody, and thank you, Mr. Galvin, for your work. I can say that I, you truly are a, it's a very valuable resource to me as the chair of the school committee, to the whole school committee and the school department. Your knowledge is very valuable to us at times. So I appreciate your work and thank you. Glad we'll be continuing.
Thank you.
Agreed with that. Thank you very much. You're on mute.
That moves us into the next action item is 6.2. It's a request for approval of the inter-agency agreement between Newport Public Schools and East Bay Community Action Program. Dr. Bean recommends approval of the inter-agency agreement between Newport Public Schools and East Bay Community Action Program. East Bay Community Action Program provide direct staffing support for Clayborne-Pell Elementary School students and families experienced homelessness aligned to Newport Public Schools Newport Cares Children Access and Resources and Education Support Initiative. The amount for the agreement is $18,325.68 and funded is provided through the Fiscal 21 McKinney-Vento Education of Homeless Children and Youth Grant. As a motion to approve the agreement as presented this evening. I see Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Winslow. And are there any questions or would we like any commentary from Dr. Bean? If Dr. Bean just wanted to give us a little brief. And then maybe.
Hi, everybody. Happy New Year to everybody and welcome to our new school committee member, Mr. Dring. The, last month, you approved the renewal of our McKinney-Vento grant for $40,000. And so tonight, what I'm presenting is two of the agencies that help me with the homeless grant. So the, what you're voting on right now is this stipend that I give to East Bay to work with the two family service coordinators that are at Pell that help me on a monthly basis, supporting our families that are experiencing homelessness.
Excellent. Are there any questions for Dr. Bean? Mr. Dring?
Dr. Bean, you said last year was $40,000 and this year it's 18?
No, the full, the full grant is 40,000 that we applied for. The, I presented that last month. Within the grant, I use two different agencies to help support families that are experiencing homelessness. And so that takes care of both the elementary and the middle and the high school. But in addition to the balance, we provide tutoring, we provide transportation, we provide necessary materials for students, we provide scholarships so that they can participate in some of our after-school programs or go to the Boys and Girls Club. So the whole balance is not just these two stipends that you're looking at tonight.
Thank you.
All righty, are there any other questions or comments? Not hearing or seeing any, Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote to approve the inter-agency agreement as presented?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Seven zero?
Thank you very much. The next, 6.3 is also a request for approval of an inter-agency agreement between Newport Public Schools and Newport Community School. Dr. Bean, again, recommends approval of the inter-agency agreement between Newport Public Schools and East Bay Community Action Program. East Bay Community Action Program, East Bay Community Action, will provide direct staffing support to Thompson Middle School and Rogers High School students and families experiencing Did I go on the right, yeah, on 6.3? Experienced homelessness aligned to Newport Public Schools Cares Children Access and Resources and Education Support Initiative. The amount for the agreement is $10,046 and funding is provided through the Fiscal 21 McKinney-Vento Education of Homeless Children and Youth Grant. Again, Dr. Bean, if you want to give us a brief little.
Do you want a motion first?
Okay, we could take a motion first, too. Motion by Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Winslow. And now, Dr. Bean can give us this brief overview.
Sure. A couple of years ago, we, when we were reapplying for the grant, we changed the structure a bit so that we had on our team someone that was directly interacting with the families at Thompson and Rogers. So we pursued the Newport Community School and have David Viera as part of our team. And he connects directly with the Thompson and the high school staff to support the students and the families. So that's what the stipend is about.
Excellent. Are there any questions for Dr. Bean? I am not seeing or hearing any. So, Mrs. Nash, if you could do a roll call vote to approve the agreement as presented.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
Thank you. That leads us, thank you, Dr. Bean. That, that leads us to 6.4. It's a request for approval of an agreement between Newport Public Schools and Rhode Island School for the Deaf. Director Andre recommends approval of this contract for a student's consultation and evaluation work as dictated by the student's IEP. Funding will come from the evaluation budget in the federal grant. And is there a motion to approve the agreement as presented? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Winslow. And Director Andre, if you could give us a brief overview and there may be some questions, so.
Well, that was the overview. It's a one-time contract for consultation for a student who's hearing impaired. And just, we wanted to make sure we're following the IEP and doing everything we can for the little guy.
Okay. And I, just to head off a question I know may be coming. The other two, I said, the amount of the contract, is it on an hourly basis or is there a set amount? And what is that amount if it's?
It's an hourly rate. And I apologize, I don't have the contract right in front of me, so I don't recall what it was, but.
I believe. I know it was in there. I don't see it.
I know, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah.
Their fees are on the last page of the contract. It's like nine, $50 to $90.
There it goes. So based on, again, there it is. Based on the services, it would be $50 an hour up to $90 depending on the services. So.
Correct.
Any questions or comments from the school committee for Director Andre? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call to approve the contract with Rhode Island School for the Deaf?
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero?
Excellent. Thank you, Director Andre, for being with us and being here today. Thanks. Next, that leads us into section seven of the agenda, which is discussion. And first item on discussion is the proposed Rogers High School Program of Study Changes 2021-2022 School Year. And Mr. Monahan is here to discuss that with us this evening. So back to Mr. Monahan.
So not a lot of changes this year. I was hoping to present to you just the few changes that are, that are being proposed. We weren't able to fully change the document so that it would be ready for publish, but I was hoping I could outline these changes and with your approval, put up a draft of next year's documents so we can carry on with course selection. And in February's meeting, I can, I can present the final document and take the draft marking off of it so that it will be official. But we can still carry on with the important work that's going to help us with some budgetary decisions. So just in brief, there was one new elective proposed in English. It's called Hip-Hop as Contemporary Poetry, something a little different to get students interested, something that might be more relevant to, to some of our high school students, but to still drill down on poetry and, and the art that it is. One change in the career tech programs is that cosmetology has been shifted to an elective. It's no longer going to be a career tech program going forward. We are adding the, the next, are proposing to add the next levels of marine trades, hospitality, and the arts CTE program. And just to note that one thing we are doing that's directly related to our star rating is we're going to have our. is we're going to have our P-Tech students take the first level AOIT course because what that will do is have our students better prepared for work at CCRI in the P-Tech areas. And the more college courses that our students take, you know, on a superficial level, the better our star rating, but they'll be more prepared to to handle the college load. Science has proposed an environmental science course that could lead to an advanced placement course down the road. Everything else is going to remain the same. There were there were some wording changes to stay to remain aligned in our creative writing, not a creative writing, our writing 104 course, just to stay in alignment with URI so that students can earn college credit by taking that course. But that's really all that's that's new to the program of studies.
Mr. Monahan, I have a question. In the NAC Tech on our backup, the second bullet was no longer offering semester course of junior ROTC for grade nine students lack of interest.
Okay.
How is that generally, how is that? Oh, go ahead, do you want to?
Yeah, that probably needs clarification. What the JROTC program tried to do for the last two years was allow for a semester course, so students could opt in just for semester one. And the hope was that if they liked it, they could remain in for the remainder of the year. And no students have done that. We promoted it. Students either took the full year course or they didn't. So to to keep that out there, just, you know, the Colonel Corbett just decided that maybe the way that we're doing it works.
Okay, yeah, so just a course during the freshman year, but it's not doesn't reflect the freshman junior ROTC.
Nope, it's still there, it's still in place, it's like it has been. We just had tried to see if we could lure more students or or get kids to make less of a commitment, just to see if they liked it, if they were on the fence and they were worried about, or if a student had other interests, they could take a half year course. It sounded good. It just didn't have any takers.
And my second question after that is, I'm happy to see that hip hop as a contemporary poetry English elective. How are the electives developed? Is there a committee of students, faculty, and staff that get together to take the input of what kids may want to learn? Or how do we how do we develop or come up with the ideas for the new electives or courses?
It can happen any number of ways. This particular one, Mr. Brennan, one of our English teachers, is pretty talented. He's he does a lot of work with the kids. And there over the years, there's been a lot of interest. He made hip hip hop or rap songs out of Shakespearean plays, different novels, summarizing, you know, what was going on in those, and the kids love him. He's put it on YouTube. If you haven't heard him before, it's it's worth a listen. It's pretty good. You know, he gets down on the kids' level. That happened, I guess that happened organically. He saw, you know, and the English department saw that there's more than just a unit's worth of material there. And maybe that would be another way to get a student to engage in in poetry. Other way, I there's sometimes it's because we need to shift our requirements that that we will, you know, create a new elective. Sometimes there's no one way, I guess, in summary. We don't have, we do have a curriculum committee that we bring things to, you know, usually when there's some demand going on. The reality is, though, that we we can't just keep offering more things. If something comes, then something probably goes. You know, they they compete against each other because we only have so many teachers and so many possibilities.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Ms. Winslow.
I was curious to know how the cosmetology program will work as an elective, like how many years would the student take, how many hours of certification will they get? And if we still plan to accept students from our district? And I've heard that I it's it's not a RIDE approved program. We don't like take tuition in automatically, but I spoke to somebody at RIDE who said you can create create an agreement with neighboring districts. And so I just kind of wanted to understand how the new cosmetology program is going to work.
So my, I'll take that. So you will probably not see or notice any change in the program. It's just that we can't publicly say it's a RIDE approved program any longer. So the hours are going to stay the same, and the requirements for the students will stay the same, you know, it's 1,200 hours, they'll take the test, you know, their senior year will work with them to to get their certification. You won't see any difference with that, excuse me. So if a student from Middletown or Portsmouth or Tiberden wants to come for cosmetology, then that's an agreement that we will make with that particular district. So, you know, Dr. Jermaine and Rosemarie will talk and say, hey, I have a couple of students that want to come over there. Do you have room? You know, let's negotiate the the tuition and and we'll make that, you know, we'll make that work. But you you won't see any change in the program whatsoever. You wouldn't notice, I mean, it's just just really, it's just in a name itself.
Okay, cool. So what if like a junior or a senior wants to come in? I mean, they can still like just do the first year or two and?
Yeah, they could take it, you know, exploratory. But I mean, if you don't get the 1,200 hours in, then you're not eligible to take the test. But they could take it exploratory. And then if they want to, you know, they'll have a leg up when they go and take it after graduation.
Cool, thanks. I was nervous when I saw that announcement, but, you know, it's it's a lucrative career that can be done anywhere, right? Not just here in Newport, but anywhere in America, anywhere in a lot of places. And so I think it's a it's a creative career and it's a skill that, I mean, how many how many of us missed going and getting our hair cut from March through July?
My hair was longer than it was in 20 years.
Yeah, so I'm just really glad to hear that you guys are throwing resources behind it and keeping us as an opportunity for the kids.
And I'd run into students all the time from Newport that are that are cutting hair and going to college. They'll, you know, cut hair in the morning and take an afternoon class or do the opposite. So and it also, they may not do it for life, but it does help them, you know, on the next step. So, yeah. And it's and, you know, the the number of students in there have been consistent since I've been here. It's, you know, it's right around 18, you know, 19 per group. So it's been, you know, fairly steady. So you you won't see any difference in the program.
Some wind that they're in their own business.
Yeah, I also wanted to add that the person I spoke to at RIDE was very appreciative and had lots of wonderful things to say about you, Mr. Young and Colleen Jermaine. And you guys are really, they're very happy with your work at NAC Tech. Just want to pass that along.
Any other questions or comments? Already seen or hearing none? Thank you, everybody, for that presentation on the program of studies. That leads us into 7.2. It's a school building committee update. Ms. Boatright and Ms. Bowlin, I'm not quite sure who's going to lead the update.
Yes, Mrs. Bowlin is. And so you did get an update in in board docs as to what had transpired up until Christmas time. But, you know, we're going to try to keep, you know, all of you totally updated and also our community if they're listening in. So basically, before Christmas, we did, you know, they we issued an RFP, a request for proposals to to get an owner's project manager, which of course is probably one of the most important decision you're going to make. We went through a very lengthy involved process with lots of legal advice on on how to, you know, pick the OPM and what and the process we went through. So that occurred the 21st, by the school building committee made their recommendation in December, and on the 22nd, the, you know, the school committee blessed it. So since then, we have the next, the next thing that was really important was we worked with our owner's project manager now to try to work on the new RFP. And this will be to get ourselves, because Pell's will be the next priority, to get it started, because we feel as if we can fast track it. And and it's it's a project that is very confined. You know, we want the building of the new addition to look just like the, you know, pretty much just like the old one. So our owner's project manager gave us the suggestion, because there's different approaches you can use. And he, they they were definitely in favor of using the, it's called design build. And 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 so basically, a designer and a builder get together and they they make that recommendation and they work on that project. We will not be using that for Rogers. It's way too big of a project. This is something that the that was done on the Met School in town, and it was very successful. It gives us a lot of control over this situation. And then then we also, the other evening, made the recommendation, we've been meeting every Monday, we will not meet next Monday, but made the recommendation to go with construction manager, construction at risk for for Rogers High School. So those are our Ps are being worked on as we speak and getting ready to go out so that we can get all those people on board and get going. We also this week spent time going over the 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 budget, which is a very fluid document and will be constantly updated. And, you know, right now, it's full of a lot of, you know, estimates and best guesses. But we feel very confident, both Louise and I, with our owner's project manager, and I know that so does the building committee, and I just feel like we're off to a really good start. Any questions?
I don't see any, Becky, so.
Okay.
Good job.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
That, thank you. That leads us into 7.3, and it's the superintendent's discussion on the school reentry plan update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also going to have Director Andre join me because we did receive some news about the testing. We have been, like other districts, looking into the possibility of doing the PCR testing and the binax testing. But we are back in in person learning. We're all very excited about it. It was nice to see the students in the buildings. And we are moving forward. We have all precautions in place to, referring to Mr. Kay's comments, and we're making sure we take all protocols very seriously, and we want to do everything to keep everyone safe. We are even keeping the gold standard of the quarantine. Quarantine, if you visited a hotspot, is 14 days. I know it caused a lot of confusion. RIDO came out with, you know, a seven or 10 day thing if you get a negative test. Newport has never accepted the negative test because a test is a moment in time. It within the 14 days, that can change. So we're keeping the 14 days as far as the quarantine for Newport, and we'll have more information, and I'll stress that more in my weekly update tomorrow. But I'm going to hand it over to Director Andre so she can literally, I think it's been for the past 48 hours, we've been trying to really move the date up for Newport because February after vacation was the first time for us. And we'd just like to be able to provide this public service for our families and staff as well as those that would like to get tested while they're at work. We have that opportunity. Director Andre?
Hi. So Newport is going to take advantage of both options from the Department of Health, both the binax testing, which is a quick result test, it's a self swab, and you get the results within 15 minutes. That will be available for all employees. And then anyone at the middle and high school who brings in a consent from a parent, they will also be able to do the self swab. And that is also what Dr. Jermaine referred to earlier that we would use with our athletes. We also have two one day events that will be scheduled. One will be at Pell next Wednesday. That one was an added day, so it's coming up pretty quick. So we've got a little bit of work to do. I think some consent forms and some information went home to Pell families today. So that is a PCR test. So parents would sign their child up for that test. The folks from EDOC and RIDO would be there to assist us, and they would be processing those tests. That test, the results come back within 24 to 48 hours. Parents will have access as well as the school to the results of those tests. Employees are also able to participate in that test, but community members and family members are not. It's only for employees and students, students with a consent form. And I think that's everything. Oh, so the I sorry, I'm just going to go back to the binax really quickly. So our nurse from the middle school is going to get trained this week, and we'll start out with 1,000 tests that we'll get from the Department of Health, so. That's everything. There's.
Can I just ask a question on the one day or you said two day upcoming test at Pell? Is there a reason that they're only like two days of it? Is?
Yeah, so they were only doing one day events at one location, and Newport was actually lucky enough to get two one day events. We have one in Jan, next Wednesday, January 20th, and then we have another one on February 23rd. But they that the Department of Health was only assigning one day to districts, but we were able to get two.
I mean, is there a reason for this, the scheduling of the day? That's what I, yeah, thanks.
So over the weekend, because there was some concern from Newport, we, they did share with us their, the direction for this group that we're doing the testing was first to concentrate in dense population, dense population areas first, a lot. So that took up a lot of the charters, Providence, Pawtucket, Windsocket, and all those other systems. And they only are able to do four, four per week. So they have a limited amount. So by the time Newport get in there, and we were in February, and that's all the capacity they have. So we were, as Candace, Director Andre was saying, we were fortunate, someone canceled, and we did put our name out. Well, if someone cancels, let us know. So that's what we were told.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The only other thing I have in my update reentry is the adjusted calendars are up on all on our website, at our school websites, and they just show the calendar for the remaining rest of the year. Next Monday is Martin Luther King Day, so that is a no school day. And then the following Monday is a professional development day for our staff and administrators. It is a school day, which is a remote day for all children on that Monday. So we're taking it one day at a time. We're monitoring very closely. And I have to say, Director Andre and the nurses, they've been like many of us, but that that crew right there, Dr. Director Andre with that crew, they're 24/7 every day. So I just want to thank them, the administrators, everyone, teachers, for everyone, for everything everyone's doing, and everyone's patience as we go through each day, one day at a time. So thank you.
Are there any questions from anybody on the school committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leary, go right ahead.
Mr. Jermaine, I'll have you comment, your voice is much better than mine, but I called Mr. Jermaine last week in the week. And students I've talked to and a few other teachers I've talked to saying, class size when they were there in class learning is very small. I mean, it's half at the beginning with like, anyway, instead of 20 is 10, a lot of kids are not shown, so we need a. So we need to verify that first. My option to, to Mr. Jermaine, she had another option, was that, why aren't we, why aren't these kids who are supposed to be in-class learning, not showing up? Put them on distance learning, and possibly bring in other students. If this, maybe it might top your list presently of waiting, but you contact parents and say, you, your, your son or daughter is available to come into in-class model, it may change in my. Mr. Jermaine had another idea, I'd like to speak to it.
Yes, Mr. Larry's suggestion, as when we talked last week, was for children that are not showing up, that do have a seat in in-person learning, is it possible to say, we're going to need to put you on distance learning, because we have a waiting list? Right now, PEL is the only school that does have a waiting list for that. But this made me think about, for the hybrid model we have at the middle school and high school, speaking with the administrators, it may be possible that there may be some room in some of those classes, so that some children can go more than two days per week. But that discussion is on the board for Thursday with my administrators. So we'll look into that. I will also share that I know the administrators have been looking into that to see when and if they can bring in students, as Director Andre with, did with her special needs population. At a certain level, she did, with her teachers, she did, and has been able to bring children in more often. I think four to five, Director Andre did come in four or five days a week.
She's on the.
Sorry, I was answering some Q and A questions, so I missed the question. Do the, do the high school come in four or five days per week, your special classes?
They're also on four.
Four, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Larry, for that reminder.
Yeah, thanks. And we could update that next month.
Sure.
To me, we are a diverse district. That students need active support. And that happens in school, not as much in distance learning, in my opinion. So I'm all for kids to get back to school, as long as it's safe, as soon as possible. And if we have room, let's get them in there if they want to go. If they don't want to go, then they don't want to go. But I'm all for that. I want to be clear to anybody that's out there to hear this. And thank you for that, Mr. Jermaine.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions on the reentry or testing? I don't see or hear any, so thank you very much, Director Andre. Dr. Jermaine, thank you. Next, that leads us to 7.4, which is the district goals. We had a nice meeting as a school committee with the superintendent about a week ago, I guess it was a week ago tonight. And so some updates and discussion on that. So I don't know, Dr. Jermaine, if you'd want anything to say, or?
I think the chart speaks for itself, and it's all there.
Are there any questions for Dr. Jermaine on the chart or the information provided? Comments? Already, I don't see or hear any, so we can continue on. That would lead us into the consent agenda. Item eight, 8.1 is approval of minutes. 8.2 is a request for approval of invoices. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatright? Are there questions or comments on anything in the consent agenda? I'm not hearing any, or seeing any. So Mrs. Nash, if you could do a roll call vote to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Sure, Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland? Mrs. Boland?
Yes, aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers? Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, 7-0.
Excellent, thank you. That leads us into section nine, which is the monthly correspondence. And in our correspondence, there is a letter from the group that does the audit for the school. And is there a motion to accept the correspondence as presented this evening? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Winslow. Any questions or discussions on the correspondence? Okay, not seeing any. Mrs. Nash, could you do a vote to, roll call vote to accept the correspondence as presented?
Or Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Boland?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mr. Dring?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
7-0, thank you.
You, thank you all. That leads us into the next section, which is reports from the superintendent and staff. 10.1 and 10.2 are the expenditure and revenue reports, and the Newport Public Schools, excuse me, restricted, not respected, restricted grant report. Although they are respected as well, so. But Mr. Gonzalez, if, if you're going to jump in, I, you know, your letter is in there, so if you want to give us a little overview, take any questions that we may have.
Good evening, school committee members. I, I try my best to make the letters as self-explanatory as possible, and I think the past few months, it's really kind of shown. But if there are any specific questions, please feel free to ask now.
Mr. Chairman?
Wow, Mr., I was going to say, they must be very good if Mr. Leary hasn't asked a question yet, but here he is, so, Mr. Leary, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have a question, just a comment. Mr. Gonzalez, the numbers all look very reasonable. I take these reports, and sometimes we deal with CPA's, friends of mine, and the numbers, they all concur that the numbers are very reasonable. The challenge, they tell me, and I know this too, is to be faced, the, the fair play, school committee will be carefully to watch the future expenditures, and avoid the natural tendency to spend every penny of excess income, especially on a nice-to-have, rather than the need-to-have items. So I think this is, the school committee has got to carefully chase these words and follow them going forward for the next six months. But we, plus, everything looks good to these people and to myself, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. One thing I had to ask, Mr. Gonzalez, and it's not really, your reports are great, and I agree, is I know the new round of stimulus has been approved, as we know well. And not much talk, although they say there's talk about funding for schools and stuff. Have we had any updates on any, any more CARES funds that we may be getting? Or when will we know that?
So last week, we were briefed from a very high level from the Rhode Island Department of Education Finance Director. He shared with the Rhode Island business officials statewide that the second passage of the CARES stimulus included about four times as much money earmarked for the, with the ESAR component, that's the elementary secondary education area. But right now, it's just too premature exactly how much will be delivered to each locality, and exactly how it will be delivered. I anticipate it'll be similar to the previous CARES monies, which were grant-based. I do know that the timeframes with some of the language brings us into eligible periods into 2023 school year. Okay, so it's not just a six- or nine-month period of availability with the monies, and it's still not available to us just yet. But it looks like we're going to have a period of time to utilize it best with specific, specific earmarks, or, you know, utilization for academic achievements. That was what was shared with us last week.
Perfect, thank you.
As I know more, I will be happy to share out.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Ms. Winslow, then, Ms. Boatright?
I just wanted to confirm, and I, because I can't remember if we discussed this last month, or if we learned this after last month's meeting, but we are getting the full amount of state aid that we had anticipated before COVID showed up. And so this is very good news, and I just wanted to know if you could confirm that for the public to hear.
Yes, it is confirmed, and it is itemized within the revenue section. The budget's on one side, where we are currently, what we received, and then for the full year anticipated, it is there. It is included.
Ms. Boatright?
And we had, we had a finance committee meeting earlier today, at which that will come before the committee next month, but it was too late to do, because the agenda had already come out for this one. The other thing that I just, just want to mention, and I know Mr. Leary will appreciate this very much, that the funding that does come from the federal government is one-time CARES money or one-time funds, which through this pandemic, has been absolutely critical to get. But it does, in a way, create a structural deficit in the fact that, because we haven't, the city didn't have the money to give, but we get it directly from the federal government, and can use it for our funding. So it's something that we're going to have to have some conversations going forward with how to not have a structural deficit from this into the future. So I just wanted to mention that. You know, in my opinion, it would have been nice if they gave it to the cities, that the cities then could give it to the school departments. But that's not how it works, so we'll have to figure that out going forward. Ray, you're on mute.
I, sometimes I don't mute, and when I go to mute, unmute, I'm not, so, sorry about that. Any other questions or comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Mr. Leary, go right.
So, Mr. Gonzalez, if you can take that federal money that Mrs. Boatright talked about, and give us a detail of what each thing is. I'm not sure that's going to create a structural deficit, depends what you spent it on. And I will check with people that know this stuff very well, to be sure. But we should see what that money has been spent on. If we have a detail of that, we can file, if it's going to create a structural deficit, that will possibly create one.
It, it was in our last month's, I think it was, but there's two different buckets. There's ones that we could use for, we could use for budgetary this year, $795,000. And then others had to be only COVID-related, and that's the ESAR. So anyhow, we, I think that will be coming out next month.
If I can, if I can share, the CARES money, I've outlined it on the federal, excuse me, the expenditure report, the revenue and expenditure report. Now, it's subtle in there, but they're highlighted in purple. It's, the, the revenue line says CARES, the ESAR. So those are the dollars that supported our operating budget. And just to echo what you just mentioned, the CRF monies, or the supplemental, which became the supplemental education impact aid, was about $950,000. That was specific to COVID PPE protection, you know, air quality control. And that was specific infusion to protect schools. Now, the ESAR funds are the Elementary Secondary Education Relief Act funds. Now, those monies were the stimulus to help our operating costs. And again, it's outlined on the expenditure report. We spent those in three categories. Insurance primarily in our IT service contracts. So insurance for workers' compensation, property liability insurance, as well as our IT support contract.
So, Mr. Gonzalez, what line are we talking about?
Okay, so if you are looking at the expenditure report, along the bottom, I have totals. And it's highlighted, and it's right underneath the revenue section. I've, I've pulled it out, but it, it is also included in the operating expense above. So below, you can see here, it says CARES stimulus one-time funding used for, and I have the three items listed, workers' compensation, IT infrastructure support, as well as property and liability insurance. Would you like to see those in the budget above, sir?
Um, yeah, unfortunately, I print these out, they come off black and white, you know, and not in color smoke, that's what I'm having difficulty with. But, you know, not your problem, my problem.
Our IT contract is in the 53 categories. And in the print, you'll probably see a gray box in the middle. In the, yes, I have it right here. It's line item 53502. Actual expenses are gray, or on the live copy, it's a light purple. And those, the light purple indicates monies were spent using the CARES dollars, the ESAR specifically.
I'll check on this one afterwards, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Gonzalez on 10.1, 10.2? All right, I don't see or hear any, so that would lead us into, I need to reduce my screen a little here, so I can see the, I believe it's the superintendent is up next, and it is the demographic. Get over there. Enrollment report and demographics, homeless report, and distance learning. So Superintendent Jermaine, if you want to entertain any questions, or, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Does anyone have any questions on anything regarding those? We are watching our enrollments very carefully. We did last week dip under 2,000 students, which I expected to go back up, but we did see a little dip. And the in-person learning, distance learning, that's staying pretty consistent. We haven't had, we're actually bringing children back, especially at the elementary level. And we have brought some children back at the middle school level. I know Rogers has always been very flexible. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead, Mr. Leary, then we'll get, there are some others, but go, Mr., go ahead, Mr. Leary.
Okay, I'm sorry, if you can't see, I can wait.
No, that, no, you go ahead. You were, you were actually first, but I said we'll get to the other, so go right ahead.
Well, Mr. Jermaine, as we spoke last month, it was 158 students less than last year. And what we spoke about is possibly finding out the ethnicity of the students that left. And the reason I say that is because, as I mentioned last time with, with me, with that, that in the service industry, there's been a lack of work. And a lot of the Hispanic people have probably moved out. I'm not saying they're not going to come back, but they have probably moved out to the place where they get work. So I don't know what that is. Maybe, or maybe as Mrs. Boatright said, same meaning, maybe it's kindergarten kids that don't want, or parents don't want to send the kids to kindergarten. I just, I'd be curious to know what these, you know, 158 students that left of ethnic, ethnicity, sorry.
No, that's fine, Mr. Leary. We did have that discussion, we had it, as a matter of fact, just last week. It was during the goals and strategy. So I do have someone looking into that. And I believe I sent a follow-up email to you yesterday, saying it's not off the radar screen. It just takes a little time.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, no, I just, I got a feeling that might, might be, but I don't know, you know? It's interesting. you know, it'll be interesting to know.
We can get the grade levels for you and see if we can get a little bit more deeper into the student data for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think there were a couple of others, I think, Ms. Winslow, did you?
I was sort of curious about the same thing, I'm not really looking for ethnicity. I, it was the December mobility report that got thrown in, and I love this thing because it shows a really interesting breakdown of where kids went, you know, we see kids moving, we also see kids coming in, and so it's just, you know, I just wanted to emphasize that tracking this is really interesting and helpful, and I think can explain a lot and maybe help us predict what might happen next year. Well, I shouldn't say that now, but, you know, I just wanted to make sure, like, you guys are looking at all that and are able to look at student-level data like that.
It is interesting to watch. It's also, for my data person, it's very challenging. She's a team of one, so she's got that and other things going on. So, yes, we realize how important it is, and that's why we're doing some restructuring over there, to give her some assistance and repurpose people to help in this area. I think Dr. Flowers has her hand up.
Oh, back to your teaching days, very good.
No, it just seems, this is not entirely unique now, that you have some people floating out and then coming back in, and this, I'm just wondering, does anyone, I'm not asking for an answer now, I'm wondering, are the teachers or the principals ever told, we're leaving, and then all of a sudden come back in? How long are they out before they regard it as having gone? And also, I'll hazard a guess and say, it might be families. So if you have two, three, four kids, I mean, that, that's spread throughout the system. So, I mean, it just seems like there's probably a pattern here that we have to see. Are they going to another school locally, or some of them deciding to go? You see some of the programs, some of the news programs, people figure there's more room to spread out the kids than the non-publics, and then they become, it's like a back-and-forth thing.
So, I'm sorry, so there are certain times of the year where housing, housing is very difficult for some families, and there are certain times of years within the Housing Authority, it's usually between Fall River, Providence, and Newport, that sometimes we have our families that have to relocate due to whatever the restrictions or whatever's going on in the Housing Authority at that time and their eligibility. We do have, and we are starting to see some families that do go back down to the islands, like Guatemala, well, not island, but Guatemala, they'll go to Guatemala, go to Central America for the holidays, they may stay for an extended time. We do have a couple of students that are here for part of the year, and then they leave, and they go back down to Central America or Puerto Rico, and they are there with their families, either in the business of whatever the family business is, and then they come back during the summer, et cetera. So we are seeing, we are starting to see different types of patterns starting to happen that we did not see maybe three or four years ago.
Yeah, it seems to have popped up as that population has increased, it's more notable, yeah. So it's not entirely the pandemic. Put all these things together, and it's, just looking at the figures on the charts for the three different schools, and you see, it's just, it's consistent for a while, and then they move, so. At least some of the details are there for us, thank you.
Oh, any other questions? If not, I know Mr. Young is hanging around, we'll move into the facility update with Mr. Young, and any questions, or I don't know if he wants to, anything Mr. Young wants to update us on?
So, yeah, so just a couple of things on this last report. And I did include what we spent and what it was on, but two of the majors, one, we redid the floors of both Thompson and Rogers High School. You know, we do that annually, so they look great. Also at Rogers, we did, we cleaned the windows up there, and we have some shared services with the city, so if some of their workers have to be indoors, you know, they'll send them down to the schools. So we did paint, you know, we touch up the paint in the gym as well, so the gym looks great. Hopefully, we'll be able to play basketball in there in the next couple of weeks, so let's, you know, knock on wood and hope, you know, we do allow the players to go in there, you know, and get some time in there. So we did, did a little, little focus on that because we really, we knew that would be a high vis, and I don't know how many fans will be in there, but.
None, zero, zero.
But on a whole, a side note, not to get off track, but I am working with Dave Connell, our ad design media class, and we're looking for a way to broadcast the games through, like YouTube Live or something like that. So we are, and I don't want to get off on a tangent, but we are working on that. We spoke a couple of times this week, and we spoke again today. When I tell Dave to go big, he comes back with something that looks like ESPN, so it'll, it'll be, but we'll have something where people from home will be able to watch the games, but, but that's something, something else, you know, at Pell, they, you know, at Pell, they did move, at one point, they moved the screens from the walls, so they went in there and they sanded and repainted them, and I walked through, they did a good job with that. So they've all picked on different tasks. And one thing I do want to add, that I'm finally arrived, our MERV 13 filters are installed in both Pell and the NACTEC, they've arrived at Thompson, they're going on the roof this week at Thompson, and then by Monday, you know, because the students aren't in the classrooms, they'll do the filters inside the classroom. So by, you know, Monday, Tuesday next week, all buildings will have the MERV 13 filters installed, so a lot of good stuff happening. And also, you know, at this time, I did encourage all the, you know, the guys in the buildings to take, take some time off, you know, they've been working hard all summer throughout this, and, you know, really doing things that, you know, like we've talked about before, that they weren't trained on, you know, cleaning and disinfecting, and so I did say, you know, I pointed out to everybody, take some time off, you guys are doing a great job, you know, go home, relax, enjoy some time with your family, so. But, you know, two of the big things were, like, the floors, and then dome construction, if you see that on there, there was a, in between the new and the old building in Thompson, he had to come in and adjust some things on there, and they gave us some things to look at in the future on that piece as well.
And I noticed in the chat, Mr. Vance said that streaming is going to be free to all our families, thank you for that, Mr. Vance.
Yeah, YouTube Live or Facebook Live, we're still trying to figure that out, but we are going to work it so that, you know, everybody will be able to see, to see the games from wherever they are, so. But again, Dave, Steve's all over this, and he's, you know, he's told me today, he talked to his friend at the Dunkin' Donuts Center, and said, hey, what can I get to set this up? And he's talking about having multiple cameras with kids with switchboards, so, you know, kids shooting a free throw, you got this angle, you know, down the court to get another angle, and, you know, we talked about microphones, and I said, well, you want to be careful with some of the coaches on that stuff, but, but he's going all out, so he's excited, you know, about that, and I think, you know, something that we'll carry forward, and, you know, into the new building is, you know, we'll start with the indoors, you know, and then if they have volleyball in the spring or something like that, and then, you know, we'll do some stuff outside as well. So this is, we're really, you know, kind of taking advantage of this negativity and turn it into something positive.
Yeah, that's good.
Thanks, thank you. Any questions from anybody? Not seeing or hearing anybody, so, thank you. Ms. Winslow.
Muted. She's muted.
You're muted for some reason.
He's trying to.
Okay. Sorry.
There you go.
I must be dead. I'm just concerned about how much data it might take a family to stream an entire, I don't know if anybody's got a specific plan set up that's really just designed for education, right? And now we want to watch the whole game on YouTube Live or something, and if, you know, YouTube Live is kind of, I've never used it very much, Facebook Live, one thing, but I don't know, have we even thought about how much, like, is that going to really be possible for all families?
It's pretty, it's pretty similar to the Facebook Live, like, it's not going to be a tremendous data drain for folks. There might be some, there might be some families that would struggle to be able to see an entire game, but I don't, I don't see that number as being very, very large.
Something to keep an eye on.
Good point.
All right, now, Mr. Gomes, you're muted.
It's funny, it doesn't, it doesn't unmute on the, anyhow, something's going on, but I'm not now, so thank you, everybody. Any other questions? I don't think so, and thank you, Mr. Young, for hanging out and giving us that update. And then lastly would be superintendent's update, partnerships, collaboration, personnel. If there's any questions, Superintendent Jermaine, go right ahead.
I don't know if anyone has any questions, I'm actually popping into that one to see if I had any updates for you there. Yes, I did, I have been joining Sankofa meetings on a regular basis, I think we're meeting twice a week, I mean, not twice a week, every other week. We have a communications plan that's been drafted out, I'm keeping my fingers crossed and finishing up a grant to the Van Buren Foundation for that. And we did receive, we were notified on 12/24, Christmas Eve, Mass Design contacted me, and they are very, we did receive, I mean, I'm sorry, Van Buren contacted me to let me know, they approved a $12,000 grant to enable us to use Mass Design to help with community meetings for our school building, build initiatives. So that was very good news. So Mass Design is a new person, new organization we'll be bringing in, and I'll keep you updated on the Sankofa meetings.
I do have a question for that.
Go right ahead, Ms. Bowlen.
So, Ms. Jermaine, what kind of response did they get? I know those classes, I believe we're supposed to start the ones that was going to be offered by Sam, how do you say it, Sankofi?
Sankofa.
Sankofa. What kind of response did they get for that, do you know?
No, I don't know at this point. It's an enrollment, its period is actually open now. I do want you to know that there was a missed posting on the, one of them, I believe it was Circle of Trust or something, and it actually should have said, I think it was, monitored by children of color or something of that same thing, but that, that posting for that offering has been revised and updated. I was informed of that late yesterday, I believe, I have not had an opportunity to go look at it, so.
You mean, you mean it's open to all kids?
Yes, it's open to all kids, all children, yep.
All children of all, that's very good to hear, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Any other questions? I think, no, I am happy in the personnel, I always like to see our alumni coming back as coaches and helping out, so it's great to see kids, students that have gone on college and now come back to coaching the sporting ranks, and that's great, exciting to see in the personnel stuff, so. Any other questions or comments?
May I? I have one, but it's not, it's, it has to do with vaccines.
Go ahead.
All right, so I just wanted to bring the committee, make the committee aware that the Superintendent's Association, joining with, I believe, I know the commissioner, and we're reaching out to the governor's office and to lieutenant governor's office. We are stressing the importance of moving school personnel, especially teachers and paraeducators, up further in the vaccine process. We're very confused as to why they're not, why they've been put so far back in the process, especially when all of us know we want as many children as possible to be able to return to school and in-person learning. So I did want to let you know that today, we had a discussion about this, the Ledge Committee, working with possibly Representative Greg Amori and others will be pushing this, but we are really trying to understand why teachers are not being put up in the line as far as getting the vaccine. So I don't know if other, if your association, School Committee Association, has been approached, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. I know tonight in East Providence, there's going to be a strong statement made about this, but I wanted to let you know.
And I'd like to add, hopefully, long-term subs can be included in that, because they're, you know, I think that's critical, thank you.
Just in our, my, the School Committee Association is stressing the importance that if they want to keep schools open, they have to get teachers vaccinated, so we are doing the same, it's similar to you, pushing that the governor to move that up for, make it available for teachers and staff in the schools. I think, I'm going to go, Ms. Winslow, and then I'll go to you, Dr. Flowers, Ms. Winslow had a question just before Dr. Jermaine gave that vaccine update.
Um, thank you. It's the course that Sankofa was offering, I got confused what happened. I know the youth healing circle that was going to be, I thought, intended for black and brown students, and that is now open to anyone? Is that what you said?
What I was told, that yes, it's always been, and that was the description, and I was informed that that posting for that Circle of Trust, I think it was Circle of Trust, was updated and adjusted on the RIDE website, and it's supposed to be open to all children. The reasoning behind that is because of the funding, it's federally funded, so it cannot limit any particular groups from participating.
Okay, all right, I understand. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, to Flowers.
Yeah, talking about the question, if the School Committee Association, Mr. Gomes, you did reference it, that they are encouraging bringing the school personnel up on the list for the vaccine, would it be in order, I know it's too late to get, probably too late to be on the agenda, but would it be in order for a resolution from the school committees to be sent to pertinent people?
Yeah, well, I'll check into that, certainly, it might be, usually when those start to circulate, I get a, an email, or we see the email from this school committee or that, I don't know, we have a meeting next week with that, so I'll see what comes, but I'll certainly do a little research, and that certainly is something we could entertain.
Even draft something and have it.
Yeah, probably February meeting, good point.
Because it just, sometimes when people see something, they say, oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, I think, this is what I feel, is that there was this, let me see, myth, but the, the line that was being put out at the beginning of all of this, oh, the kids don't catch this, the kids don't get sick. Well, if anyone's been in the classroom, if we say going viral, now we know what it means, and especially if you're in the lower grades, and get right through a building, and it's, and this is, I mean, this is really serious, and people who are working closely with the young people, which everyone is, it's foolish to put people at risk, it's, to me, it's unethical to put anyone at risk.
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the reports from superintendent and staff? Motion would be in order to accept the reports as presented, Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boltright. We've had our questions, so we can just do a simple vote of, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Next up is suggested meeting. meeting dates, meeting dates and agenda items. We have January 25th, we have a school building committee at 5:00 PM, and Tuesday, February 9th is our next meeting of the Newport School Committee. That would take, go right ahead, Ms. Winslow. You're muted.
My space bar is dead. Sorry. I, I don't know if, if, can I just make a comment about a discussion item that I requested for next month, or if it's not on the agenda, I don't know if I can speak to it. But it would be about attendance. Is that okay? You're muted, right?
Muted.
I can't read you.
Can't read your lips.
I think my mouse is dying. It's kind of funny. I have to use my space bar, but uh, go right ahead. If it's an agenda item, you can talk about it now.
So I think last month I had asked if we could get attendance reporting, and felt like the Sea Tree attendance reporting wasn't, I wasn't seeing it, and I, it felt like it had been a regular thing to me. And I, I bugged Colleen with some emails, and I, I, I just, I, I, I am interested in discussing it next month, but not simply to, I don't really care, like, of X number of kids are not in school. You know, it could be the same kids where we've always had trouble with. It might be different kids. I'm curious to know, you know, how we might be seeing attendance maybe impacting academic performance or not at all. Because we just keep, I at least keep hearing all these rumors, right, or seeing it on the news of kids not coming to school, and all this progress we're missing, and it's going to be a disaster around the entire country. And so I just want to know, you know, what the administrators are seeing so far in terms of, we know we have attendance challenges, we always have, but is it any different this year? Is it any better? Is it, you know, and there are so many reasons, right? And I know people are trying very hard all the time to get the kids into, into school and participate. And so I just wanted, just so that we're not caught by surprise, you know, when a, some report comes out, I just want us to start talking about it. And if, if we're going to need help, extra help to overcome any of this next year, or when, when things are quote "normal" again, you know, if we need to start advocating to the city, we're going to need more teachers or creators, or whatever it might be. That's really where I'm trying to get, and I, and so I, I wanted to throw that out there and see if others felt the same way. And if so, you know, we put that on the February agenda. Please, yes, go ahead.
Go right ahead, Dr. Jermaine.
So Mr. Vance and I, as a matter of fact, today's Tuesday, right? Right. This morning, we meet Tuesday mornings when we're talking. We're going to be, he's going to be speaking to that specifically. And a lot of the statements you just made, like, who's coming, who's not coming, are the kids being successful? He's already started to look into that. And I, I know he has, he'll have a lot to share with you on that. And the other principals as well, they'll be ready, because they are clearly aware of the importance of attendance, but also that the committee and all of us would like to know, how are we, how are we addressing it? What are we doing? That's the first thing. Second thing is, at the end of this month, there will be a Sea Tree meeting as the Van Buren grant closes, but we have other partners that are staying with that initiative. So we'll have an update from that as well. That's the 25th, I think it's on a Monday. I was, I got some kind of invite for that today. So we will have a lot more to share with you. And with Ms. Schluckman, Dorian Schluckman, and the data, we're still trying to figure out a way, how to present it so it's clear. And to your point, how's it impacting attendance? And my last comment on this will be, just this morning, from the Pell perspective, for instance, Principal Westman mapped out a communication that she did, and I just tweaked it here and there, but there's specific data in it to show the parent, your child's been out, this is where your child should be. It's tied into the reading level ability, and it's tied in, she had another data point there. But it's clearly showing your child has not been here. This is where your child is supposed to be. This is where your child is at, and the research is showing if your child doesn't AB, we're going to have a lot of problems going forward. So that communication has gone out. Thompson and Rogers has already sent out some letters to families. So we can have that for you in February. Absolutely.
Great. Yeah, I'm really, just like I said to you, Colleen, but I want to say to the committee, I mean, I, I only want to be in the position to advocate for you, you know, to RIDE, or to the city, or whoever it might be, if we're going to need to think about things differently next year, to overcome the challenges of this year, and I want to start thinking about it as soon as we can. So it's not to, I'm not looking to poke fingers into terrible data, you know, just to, let's start talking about it and, you know, identify where we can, where we should act soon.
And when there's more information about the stimulus money coming to the schools, there is going to be a tie to academic performance and gaps and what's going on. So I think larger administrations sees that schools are going to need a lot of support going forward.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, sounds good. There are no executive sessions for this evening, so that would lead us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Ms. Boatright seconded by Dr. Flowers. So there's just a simple voice photo. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for, everybody for participating, and have a good night.
Good night.
You too.
Take care, everybody. Good night.
Good night.